We saw a call, a meeting to order. Do you have any additions or questions? So, we're on the Select Board minutes of ten twenty-three.
I'll make a motion.
This is from a meeting of, um, the second, I wasn't there. So I will not be able, I abstain.
You're abstaining, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Pay orders, we have pay orders in the amount of eighty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents. All those, questions?
Do you need a?
Yep, he had a four, for eighty-three thousand, it was forty-three. He had a forty on, so it's eighty-three, one ninety-three, ten.
Do you need a motion before we can? I make a motion to discuss, um, the pay orders.
I'll second that.
Um, what is the, um, forty thousand for Julie?
Gilbert Hunt Library donation, it's her annual.
It's her annual donation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Julie, is that gonna create a cash flow problem for you? Because this, it's not the normal time that you do give.
No, this is usually when they ask for it, we pay the rest out in December.
Okay.
No, we're, we're good.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Are we done with the portable restroom rental?
No, that's these down there.
Is there a year round?
Yeah.
Okay.
So was your motion to approve as well, or?
Um, I can, should I make a new motion? I make a motion to approve the pay orders of October seventeenth in the amount of eighty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and ten cents.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You abstain?
You abstain first?
Yes. Road Commissioners Report. So Phil's not gonna be here tonight. He did say to Sandy that he thought the road crew would be able to do the repairs, the flood repairs at the town garage this winter, so.
Excellent.
Honorable mentions.
To Bruce and Maureen Duchesne and Tring Dagnell for boarding up the Elfin Lake concession stand for the winter, thank you.
You gotta roll chutes up.
Um, I was also gonna mention that, uh, we got notice back from the state that Trish Nash has been appointed as the health officer, so.
Great.
My thanks to Trish for taking that on. Public comments. Everybody's here for, in July, I'm writing. Quarterly financials.
Yes.
Here go, Julie.
So, let's see. Under incomes, so the target's three months or twenty-five percent is what we try. Uh, just going down income under Highway State Eight. The state has already paid us our three quarterly payments because of the July flooding, which is nice for us. Going down to forty-five seventeen recording fees. I don't see that hitting budget this year with higher rates and higher sales price and lack of inventory. Forty-five twenty-six, delinquent property taxes, those are over budget and hopefully continue on that way. Under miscellaneous, the, the greater loan proceeds is under there for two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, five hundred. Looking at all the summer rec program, the gate income concession, that's all done for the fiscal year, so those are pretty much on budget. And the last one for communications, they've already exceeded their budget for the year, so that is good. Under expenses, um, the only thing for administration, the road crew overtime salaries, that's already over budget, but most of that is for the related work for the flooding in July, so hopefully some of that will be reimbursed from FEMA. On page two, under town government, there's no budget for cemeteries because we're gonna take that. That will offset it with what's in the CD, we have close to six thousand dollars in the cemetery CD. And ARPA expenses will offset with the money that's in the ARPA CD. Nothing under appropriations yet, under highway equipment, fifty-three oh two. Forty-one hundred of that is for the debris blower setup, so that's already over budget. There's a credit under traffic control devices, and we were reimbursed for a damaged sign on West Hill Road. And the resident of Deer Run Lane, the private road sign, she's already paid us, but it hasn't been expensed. And then under page three, everything is pretty much on power yet. Rec expenses are pretty much done for the year except for what hasn't been spent. The salaries are done. Concessions. Any questions?
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks.
So Rowland County Solid Waste.
Who used to call?
I saw somebody's phone calls.
He said, "Talk."
Hello, Bruce's, this is Bruce.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can, there's a lot of background noise.
Well, there's a lot of going on in the room right now. Did you get?
Folks have a dark cell down there.
Thank you.
What are you looking for?
So Mike Shea's about to give us a presentation, Bruce. Hi, Bruce.
Hey.
How you doing?
Fine, how you doing?
I'm doing perfect so far.
Probably on after my suit, so they're doing, new terms went in today.
That's busy time.
Yeah. I think some of them are gonna find Jesus.
Amen. Okay, not too long ago, well, actually several months ago, before, in the spring, we met with this board to talk about a great opportunity with a grant from USDA. Was for X dollars, we were the only ones in the state, 'cause they like our plan, I'm thinking. Well, anyway, we're coming full circle, we've done a lot of work, we've, uh, some of the things that we talked about at the meeting, I'm gonna kinda re-paraphrase, reiterate, and, and see how we've come. If you follow along on the pages, I'm gonna kinda read exactly, so, um, Brianna, Brianna Frianzoni, my program manager, I'm so sorry, Brianna. She's an intricate part of the management team at Rowland County Solid Waste, and she likes the numbers. And taking the numbers and, um, so we have the data to make good decisions. So we're gonna capitalize on her great skill set to present to you the best we know at this time. Front page, pretty much what we talked about, this is a grant from USDA Rural Development. And our job was to kinda reach out to all the towns, the project works to align the knowledge base within twelve rural towns within this district. We have eighteen towns, but we took the, we were allowed to pick the most rural towns by population to incorporate access for them to receive this, these benefits. We wanted to update the, um, the towns with the newest laws, the greatest practices, and innovative tools with proficiency is needed to be efficient and successful when managing waste. As we, as we know, for those that get into waste, or those that don't get into waste, the more you get into, the more you realize that you don't know. And to be really proficient in it on a day-to-day working basis, um, is a lot of information. It's one of the most heavily regulated, um, industries in the state. So let's go back on the laws, Act One Forty-eight, which kinda timelines what trash does. Back in July, two thousand and fifteen, um, the law mandated recyclables, and they're banned from the landfill. It is illegally to knowingly, wantonly throw in recycles into your trash that goes into the landfill. On July first, two thousand and sixteen, yard and leaf debris, uh, was banned from the landfill. It is legal to put leaves and brush into the bag that go into the trash. And then more recently, July first, two thousand and twenty, food scraps. One of the big studies that came out of, um, UVM was that we were finding, not just, but it's, it came back that up to more than forty percent of the contents of a trash bag contained food waste. So right now, we're diverting that food waste, and you're allowed to put more trash in there for, so you get more bang for your buck when you do this. That's one of the efficiencies that, um, the residents can have if they do it correctly. Some of the summary related to Wallenford was, we met you and the path teams members on April third, um, two thousand and twenty-three for our kickoff participation meeting and outreach program. Some of the things that we did, um, we mailed out mailers to every resident in town. On May eleventh, this was about almost seven hundred mailers. I say that, I wanna pull that apart, there's many types of hybrid presentations or programs that were funded by grants over the years. All those that I found did not have the mail-out, um, part of that. I thought it was very important to see how that would make a difference, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, we also sent out emails to, uh, the residents that were part of the district, 'cause they signed up with permits and, um, with that, um, they can only say that we didn't know. So we'd like to partner with each and every customer that comes through our, um, facility in a positive way, not to spam, say that we don't have time to do that. Um, we also sent out, uh, we did that on June twenty-second. And then we have, um, a newsletter that goes out to many, many people who we give quarterly reports to on the latest and greatest. I, if you don't, uh, if you're not a subscriber to this, I recommend that you go up to our website and subscribe. So you would get that email every quarter and it'd be a one or two-page thing, these are the greatest, and with a lot of the links for more information. We also, uh, so, so that's that, so, um, one of the things that we did was, on our website, we made it pretty interactive to show the program, the three steps. The pre-survey, what the outreach consisted of, and after you do the outreach, you could take the post-survey. Some of the goals was to identify town needs as it relates to trash, create partners and teams to build upon needs, build capacity to reduce diversion rates, increase recycling rates, introduce best management practice is to increase resident expandable income. So if you recycle well, you get more money. I talked a little bit about that, like the food waste, and I talked about it at our first meeting, too. Increase awareness and change behavior. Provide final analysis to the Select Board. The last thing I said is about the, one of the behaviors. Do you think attitudes and behaviors have changed in your town when it comes to proper waste management? And I think, I think that's a question that needs to be one of those constants on every year's goals for the board, because if you can increase diversion, the town's cost would go down. Or could, there's different tactics on how you do that, too. So with that said, and I'll talk a little bit more about that after Brianna talks about the pre-survey participation rate in.
So, um, this graph right here just kinda shows, um, the amount of participation we had from each town. Um, so we had an average participation rate of eighteen individuals. Um, but Wallenford had a, had forty-two individuals that participated in the pre-survey, which was far above anyone else. So that was an overall participation rate of nineteen percent, so that was really good to see. Yeah, and then interesting, um, a hundred percent of everyone who took the survey said that they get rid of their trash through a local transfer station. So it's kinda interesting that no one who took the survey said that they do, um, choose to do pickup service, which is kinda interesting compared to other towns who did partially, um, a percentage did say they use that. And then the other graphs on the next page, does your household recycle, recycle, and if so, how often? So this kinda just shows that a large amount of individuals do recycle every day in Wallenford. Roughly sixty-five percent, um, recycle every day, and that, um, about twelve individuals do it once per week. And that's far and above for both graphs, shows that, um, those who took the pre and post do recycle every day, which is encouraging also. And then on the next page, does your household compost, and if so, how often? There was a staggering amount of individuals who did say they composted, which is very positive. And there was a lesser amount saying they did it two to four times a week or once a week. But only two individuals said they never compost, who did the pre-survey. And then on the next page, what items should never go into the trash bag or the landfill? Um, so this is just kind of like a comparison chart, um, I show the, the rate of, um, who, um, understood that electronics, tires, paints, um, et cetera, don't go in the landfill. And for most of these, you could see that, um, they understood a hundred percent. And then those who did, um, the knowledge was retained, was I put in green, or if the knowledge wasn't retained, I highlighted it in red to show there was a decrease in the amount of knowledge retained. But for the most part, you can see that people improved after doing the, um, webinar, which was really good, positive to see.
So I would say, just by that, behaviors were changed. Attitudes have changed, perhaps. We can measure that over time, too. Results. Wallenford residents are above the overall average in most categories when it comes to knowledge and recycling, compost, and hazardous waste. In general, Wallenford residents have relatively strong opinions of the importance of recycling and composting with more than sixty-five percent of the participants who participated in both every day. Unfortunately, um, the district was unable to collect post-survey data from everyone who took the pre-survey. Uh, most of the survey data would have allowed us to provide more robust analysis. And, and a larger sample, too, would have helped, um, with that. But it's not for naught, you know, the things that we learned as lessons is that increase participation rate over free, offer, perhaps, offer free incentives for those who participate. We often, um, drastically reduced, um, composting bins in the blue bins. These are like ninety, ninety percent off for those that were able to take the post-survey and participated in all three steps. So, you know, the next thing we're thinking, and this, this is like, if it was free, maybe, maybe we could increase that by a certain percentage, perhaps? But maybe, both, both the pre-survey and the post-survey needed to be completed for full participation in the grant. And that's where we are developing it, but the biggest thing here is that we did learn is how do we develop long-term work plans along the participant advisory teams that the board develops? How do we work with the board to help? Help, um, with all the, with all the goals that we set out in our beginning meeting? I, I think, um, at this point, this is not a one-hundred-percent completed research paper. There's many more questions that are addressed, that's gonna be sent to you when we complete it for your town, and it'll, they have a little bit more data to expand upon some of the nuances that you're looking for and perhaps over time, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this or where this is gonna be carried on. There, there is a, is, is more, we, we do have some leftover composters. We thought there was gonna be more. So perhaps what we're thinking right now is, after talking to USDA, we're gonna see what our options are with this, and perhaps we can carry this on to, um, a program that's gonna be for next year. Or something on a rowing base, I'm not sure. I think, I think, um, I'm open to ideas on what would work for Wallenford, for each town. But I think overall, Wallenford has the highest participation rate, which is, which is a good thing. And the next pages, we're available, myself, Brianna, and Brian Salys. Our training coordinator, uh, outreach coordinator, um, who visits the town and, um, coordinates with people here, the transfer station people here, provide resources, training if needed, at least twice a year. And I'd open this up for questions for, from anyone. Questions, thoughts?
I think one of the most direct benefits you could do for the town is to find us a source for styrofoam to recycle. We get a lot of people at the transfer station bringing in styrofoam from packing and packages and stuff, and, uh, it ends up going into the trash.
Yes.
We don't have a source.
No one takes it around here. Well, I shouldn't say that, Bruce, Bruce and I have been talking about this, this has came up, um, I've been working with a group of district managers who is, well, at least one of them, two of them have got a grant to buy this hundred-thousand-dollar machine that you put the styrofoam in, and it makes, makes these, squirts out and makes these ingots, and then you ship, you ship them to Pittsfield, Massachusetts. And they, they buy them, it's no money in it, and you still gotta come up with all that money. You gotta come up with the staff that are gonna do this, and you gotta have a place to store it. Just like some of the plastics, like you see, you see the, the number fours for pellets or the number, this, this, we take one, twos, and fives, you're missing a bunch of them, 'cause there's just no market for it. And in a capitalistic society, the reality is, it goes in the trash. Until we can come up with a program, we are vying to continue conversations, 'cause I, too, believe it's important. If we can get this out of the waste stream, and, you know, it doesn't have to make a huge profit, but maybe we can reduce our loss by collaborating with other districts and other towns. If we have enough supply, maybe that can offset some of our expenses. We're gonna continue to look at that, also with the number four for the pellet bags, too.
Well, we have a home for the pellet bags.
Yeah, you guys are number one, you guys started it all. You've been, I've been, I've been talking to, with other people about this for about, almost a year now. And the next step is I gotta reach out to the towns and see what happens. I think the very next day, I got a phone call from someone from this town, I, I forget who it was, that was talking about what they wanted to do, and, uh, it, it worked, it was beautiful. It, it's, you have some really good, um, people here that make that happen. I wish, I wish, I wish we can clone them.
Really good.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a big thing, it's, you don't see it too often. But we, we'd like to be part of that also, but it's the same situation. Cost, storage, me and I was to do it, traveling, but, you know, the shipping, it, it all adds up. Any other questions for Mark? That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wanna stay on the line, Bruce, or hang up?
I'm okay, we're done with business, I think we understand what, uh, situation in Rowland County is.
Thank you.
We're good.
All right, super, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good night, Bruce.
Thanks, Mark, thanks, Brianna, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vermont Emergency Management buyout forms for the Hunter and Young Properties. Um, we tabled this at the last meeting, find out more information regarding our responsibilities for maintenance on properties. We got a response back from Brian McWalters. I guess, he kinda left it open, I mean, we can do, we can mow it, or we can let it grow up.
Who is Brian McWalters?
From Vermont Emergency Management.
Oh, yeah.
So if, uh, the rest of you are good with that, I guess what we just need is authorization for me to start signing lots of papers.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to authorize our Chair, Boots Duchesne, to send the enclosed forms and anything else that may come up with the process of the buyout for the Hunter and Young Properties.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Easy enough? Yeah?
That's it.
Is there anything that we can do to authorize some bureaucratic process that goes along with this? I'm watching this as a neighbor, that's been involved in this kind of flooding in our neighborhood for five times. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can all help to speed it up.
I don't think so.
It's all beyond us.
I mean, it's federal laws.
It's not in our control. We're just following through with the process, so.
I'm sure everyone that's involved would be very willing to be helpful. So just let that be encouragement.
It's not our timeline. It's, Vermont Emergency Management told us from the beginning, it's an 18-month or longer process. And I spoke with Brian McWalters a week or so ago, and he actually said, well, Wallingford was ahead of the game compared to most other towns, so it may not feel like it, but we're moving forward. We appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to know, how come they all get cushy chairs? We've got to sit on the hard things.
Here.
I'm leaving now.
Oh, no. No, I'll take it.
Good night.
Good night.
That's all it takes, is give up my cushy chair.
You're always so generous.
I'd try.
So is Erica going to be here?
She is, so if you want to...
Maybe we'll skip that for now and come back to it. So, everybody had a draft agreement for the Town Hall weatherization project.
So the only difference is the one in front of you, Ken Welch asked me to take out the performance bond, and so that's the one in front of you has that out of there. The rest is the same as the one in your packet.
Do I need a motion that folks authorize me to sign it?
I make a motion that Bruce Duchesne signs our agreement for the Wallingford Town Weatherization.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're going to need to risk, you know, things. Everything's always being...
Yeah.
I'll come in tomorrow.
I better watch when I keep motioning.
So, VLCT passive grant. So VLCT is offering a passive safety grant, up to $2,500 with no local match. Sandy spoke to Steve about a new hazardous waste containment pallet for the town garage, which is required by VOSHA. Steve also requested a roadside mowing sign package and a 55-gallon drum dolly. Julie, Jill, and Sandy would like ergonomic office chairs. Do we want to authorize Sandy to submit a grant application?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you second that, Kathy?
It was seconded by Karen.
Like a lot, for $2,500. Hope you guys don't end up fighting over who gets what.
I know.
Can you put in your request prior to doing the grant? Then we can divvy out the money, the funds accordingly? So you're going to have to, you know, who makes the best cookies?
Town Hall use requests, so.
We do the uninsured.
Uninsured.
There's two VLCTs in a row.
Not my agenda, is it?
Well, it's not on the agenda.
It's in the packet. I mean, we can wait till the next meeting, I guess.
Okay.
Need an answer right away, or no?
I don't think...
You need an answer tonight?
I think we can, I think we can wait till November 6. I think that one came in last minute, and I threw it into the memo, but not on the agenda.
So, we're back to Town Hall use requests.
Okay.
You can pass these down and stuff. I, in my retirement, have found myself to be busy again with a nonprofit that has just started up, and it consists of the towns of Mount Holly, Shrewsbury, and Wallingford. And the idea of this is to help people, like me, seniors, stay in their homes by helping them with tasks around the house, friendly visits, shopping, and all that good stuff. And it's volunteer-led, and we just have, we're trying to get members now to join the organization. And besides services, we're also going to be doing public events, educational events. So we're partnering with Neighbor Works, and they're going to be doing a program on safety in the home for seniors. And we're hoping that we can use the fine facilities of the Town Hall for November the 4th. And I got the, I signed the use agreement and all that, and I have to throw myself on the mercy of the Select Board to ask if there's any way we can get around the expense involved, since we're a nonprofit and we're basically just starting out, so. Hopefully, this will be the first of many events, because we're not going to be able to deliver services. This is a real chicken and egg kind of thing. I have to get volunteers that are willing to help the elderly, and at the same time, get members. So in the meantime, we're trying to really get our name out there through public events, and this will be one. We might do some kind of Christmas holiday event, too, and that'll be in a different location. And we're hoping 50 to 75 people, crossing my fingers, we'll see what happens. And we also just got an insurance certificate today to say that you have coverage, so.
I'll make the motion that we allow them to use the facilities at no charge.
Second.
Question?
What's the status for elevator?
The census for upstairs?
The elevator.
Elevator.
Getting upstairs.
I mean, I think the weight on it is like 1,400 pounds.
There's no, during elections, we had issues with it not always working and considering stuff.
It's that accordion door.
Okay.
Now we're not letting people put freight on it, so it should be okay.
Just wanted to make sure, because considering your population, would be utilizing it.
Yeah, yeah. We're hoping also, maybe, to get our volunteers to attend this as sort of like an in-service training, because they'll have to know about these issues when they go into people's houses. And I guess, just a shameless publicity, these are not just going to be volunteers, but we have a whole vetting system. There's about 300 of these villages scattered around the country, and that's one of the attractions of this. Everybody's vetted before they come to your home.
That's nice.
Yeah, thanks. And thank you so much for your generosity. We appreciate it, and hopefully, I'll see each of you there, November 4th.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, I'll give you the certificate now?
Yes, that'd be great. This is not the original, right? This is just a copy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're all set for you, Erica.
I thought I was early. Weird, looking through this thing.
We're zipping right through tonight.
We're almost ready. Well, as requested, I did have a telephone conversation with the town attorney on the issue of the industrial zone. And I believe you all have a printout of the language that he and I discussed and changes, and that will be brought before the Planning Commission on Wednesday for approval. The commissioners already have a copy of it. It's already been placed within the draft of the zoning rig. And as you can see, what we currently have is up top, and the proposed is below it. It's normally in light blue, but you can't read it if it's in light blue. Sorry. So, other than that, he said that's fine. Nice conversation, by the way. And to add a little bit more to the mix, Logan Solomon, from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, looked over the proposed zoning. And I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with Act 100, Statute 100, Act 47, the Home Act, that the legislature passed this past summer. But he picked up on a few things that would have been, it needed a little bit of shoring. And so he told me what they were. He actually gave me the verbiage, if you will, that he recommended, and it referenced all the sections on the S-100, so, and these are things that we should have. And if we don't, we'll have them eventually, so we might as well put them in now. Nothing, absolutely, there are nothing that is going to change a lot. For example, and I can leave a copy of this for everybody, I'm sorry, I didn't make enough. In Section 606 on Appeals, he has residential development interested persons are prohibited from appealing conditional use approvals in state-designated areas, including Wallingford's Village Center, because that's addressed in Section 9 of the Act. He's also got some definitions in here that we have been looking for, and he gave it to us. And there is a new definition that we have to have, emergency shelter. Any facility, the primary purpose of which is to provide a temporary shelter for the homeless in general, or specific populations of the homeless, and that does not require occupants to sign leases or occupancy permits, and that's in Section 4 of the definitions. So I've already included that in the draft, that the Planning Commission will be discussing on Wednesday night. But he looked it over. He is one of the planners at the Planning Commission, and in his opinion, except for the S-100 and everything, I already told him that we had changed the industrial. He said it looked pretty good. So, we're ready to have the meeting on Wednesday. The Planning Commission will vote on the changes, and then I will be back asking permission again.
For BSAT?
Mm-hmm. But even the town attorney, when he, when we were discussing everything, he said he looked it over, and it looked pretty good to him, so. The problem is, we're trying to hit a slightly moving target, we have all the changes coming through. The big one could have been the definition of municipal water as opposed to community water. And luckily, we don't have to worry about that. So, that's my report.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome. And I can send you the updated copies of the full-blown draft, if you want, when I get home. I'll send it to Sandy when I get home. All 54 pages of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Let's see, I think we're down to Select Board comments and concerns.
Again, yeah, I got a couple of concerns. One concern is, I understand that out in the social media world, that we're getting accused of not following open meeting laws, I guess. And this is not for the Select Board, this is more for the people of Wallingford. If you do have a complaint, bring it to us, tell us, talk to us here, in person. I personally would prefer it. I don't do social media, so, you know, if you have a complaint, please bring it forward. I mean, enough social media is enough. And we are looking for volunteers. We're not a paid org. We don't get, well, we get paid, but we don't get paid. So, that's our person. The water at the faucet, where do we stand on that?
I mean... I don't know at this point.
Does the water need to be located? Is that part of the problem?
Was there a problem?
Yeah, they dug the hole and couldn't find a water pipe anywhere near the building.
Oh. Okay.
So...
Okay.
And I guess, my understanding is, they turned, when they turned on the street valve, the old spigot or whatever that supposedly was disconnected.
Was still connected.
Was still connected, and there's water there. So...
Okay.
I think...
Okay.
I don't know where we're going from at this point.
Okay. Okay.
I think probably the whole thing needs to be rethought, and...
Okay.
I don't know the answer to it at this point, Mark.
No, that's kind of what I was looking for. I will, sometime this week, I will go down and try to find it.
Okay.
I have no clue where it might go, but I'll go the old-fashioned way of finding it, that's in the dozen odds, but I haven't missed one yet, so I can... I'll go take a chance. I'm not guaranteeing it, but it might give an idea of where it goes.
Any information we can get, I think, would be good.
Yeah, I mean, it'll probably be later on the week, but someday when it don't rain. That's all, Anna.
One thing I wanted to bring up at this meeting, do we have a fairly defined building use policy, other than the application form or whatever? The reason I'm bringing this up is because we've got a meeting scheduled in November, and Sandy took a lot of crap from an individual that normally uses the building on that night. I'm wondering if we need to revise the policy so that people understand that Town Hall business comes first, or...
Prioritizing.
Takes priority, so. Just something to think about on my own here.
Did I see a recommending nomination for a new member?
Oh, well, they recommended it just the other night.
Do we need to, or we got to wait for that?
We won't have need to put it on our agenda. I changed emails with Mark Noble today.
Yeah.
So your next meeting is November 6th. Their next meeting is November 9th, so if you can appoint him, and he won't miss a meeting.
But maybe we can...
Can we invite him to come before the vote, so the rest of us can meet? Unless everybody else knows him, I don't know who he is.
I don't know.
He's an able-bodied, that's all I know.
Well, maybe, maybe not. You never know.
Well, he's volunteered. He's got it.
That might be a good idea to look at that building list form.
I sent an email today about broadband survey. I don't know if, Mark, you're proficient in broadband, right?
Sure.
Would you be willing to take the survey?
I will. I looked at it, well, I took a quick look at it. I don't like to do those things only because it's now absolutely nothing the way the state runs their broadband.
But you will?
I'll take it.
Okay, thank you.
In other business, Sandy submitted a whole bunch of stuff for the speed signs. So we'll have to see what the state comes back with. On the road could deliver a couple of wads of wood chips to the ball field. Wallingford has turned in over 4,000, 4,111 pounds of books.
Wallingford leading the way at the transfer station.
Wow. All aspects.
That's awesome.
What does that include?
It's all about competition.
Does that include catalogs and, you know?
No, it's just...
Just reading books?
Yes, just books.
I don't see any figure about books. Probably 500 pounds of them were mine.
Thank you.
Cleaned out your library?
He did.
My attic.
Your attic.
Oh, yeah, that's big.
I think it took me like three trips, so. College textbooks and all sorts of stuff.
At some point, yeah.
And I think we've covered everything for tonight.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.